I was on safety, I was on safety.
Hello ladies, how are you?
Good. Do it.
Do it.
You get it.
So, so, what's about the mystery?
No, your only person I called.
So, I didn't say anything to anybody? I didn't say anything to anybody, I didn't mail it. I knew email already gone out. I wonder if it was like, it fell down in the mailroom and someone found it? Anyway, I guess better like never. It is online. Yeah, yeah, so, from our website, there's kind of a searchable version, it's a PDF version by each chapter. You're welcome to use that.
Yeah.
Well, I thought I'd look into it. But then she said Monday, she's like, oh, I think I showed up with a foot sparring yesterday.
How do I look? Does it look?
What are we doing wrong?
I wish we could meet here.
Wesley.
Wesley, I haven't been really.
I love Jackie. I love him. What care?
The worst.
Yeah, yeah, I know he's talking about John or something.
Mark doesn't work.
Well, but I mean.
It was just.
Welcome to the Durham Plan and Commission. The members of the Durham Plan and Commission have been appointed by the City Council and County Board of Commissioners as an advisory board to the elected officials. You should know that the elected officials have the final say on any issues before us tonight. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please go to the table to my left and sign up to speak. For those wishing to speak, please state your name and your address clearly when you come to the podium. Please speak clearly into the microphone. Each side, those wishing to speak in favor of an item and those wishing to speak in opposition to an item, have ten minutes to present each side. The time will be divided among all persons wishing to speak. If you are here opposing the rezoning tonight, you should be aware of what's called a protest petition. A protest petition can be very helpful to those residents who live in the rezoning area. Please consult the planning department staff for any details on a protest petition and they will be happy to help you. You should also keep in constant touch with the planning department as to when your case will go before the elected officials for a final vote. Finally, all motions are stated in the affirmative, so if a motion fails or ties, the recommendation is for denial. Thank you. Can we have a roll call?
Commissioner Bealan.
President.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
President.
Commissioner Gibbs.
President.
Vice Chair Harris.
President.
Chair Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Huff.
Commissioner Lamb.
Present.
Commissioner Paget.
Present.
Commissioner Smusky.
Present.
Commissioner Walters.
Here.
Commissioner Whitley.
Here.
We have excused absences from Commissioner Beechwood and Commissioner Wonders.
And Commissioner Huff emailed me today also, we can add that to the minutes. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Good evening Commissioners, Pat Young with the Planning Department. We do have one adjustment to the agenda, item seven A, which was a resolution in honor of former Commissioner Teji Kimball. We'd asked that that be referred back to staff and we will reschedule it for November. Commissioner, former Commissioner Kimball called us today and indicated that he had a conflict with this evening's meeting.
Alright, thank you.
Also, if I might quickly certify for the record that all public hearing items before you tonight have been advertised in accordance with the provisions of law and we have affidavit to that effect on file with the department.
Alright, thank you sir. Can we get approval of the minutes?
So moved.
Alright, it's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor of the approval of minutes, let it be known by raising your right hand.
Minutes has been passed eleven to zero.
Alright, thank you. We'll move down to item five, public hearing for plan amendment, Murrayfield Commercial Case A 1200015 and zoning case Z 1200026.
Good evening, I'm Laura Woods with the Durham City County Planning Department, I'll be presenting the plan amendment. This proposal by Horvath Associates would change the future land use on 1.85 acres in North Durham from low-density residential to commercial, this is within the suburban tier. Site is located east of Guess Road, north of Horton Road and south of Victory Boulevard. To the north, it's a place of worship and low-density residential. To the east, low, medium-density residential. To the west, vacant and to the southwest, medium-density residential. To the south is commercial. According to the applicant, and this is the most crucial point of the applicant's justification, the proposed flume change is consistent with the existing zoning on the property. It would remain so should you approve the rezoning request that is associated with this plan amendment. There are four criteria that staff use to evaluate these reports. Is the proposed land use consistent with adopted plans and policies? Is the proposed land use compatible with land use patterns existing in future? Does the proposed land use create substantial adverse impacts? And is the site of adequate size and shape to accommodate the proposed land use? Staff has reviewed the proposal and concluded it is consistent, it is compatible, it does not create substantial adverse impact and it is of adequate shape and size. Therefore, staff recommends approval. That concludes my report.
Good evening, Amy Wolf with the Planning Department, presenting the zoning map change report for Z 1200026, Muirfield Commercial. The applicant is Horvath Associates, it is within the city's jurisdiction and the request is to change the existing zoning from commercial neighborhood with the development plan to the same district, although modifying the development plan and removing it from its current development plan which includes a larger area. The area is 2.95 acres and the proposal is for 8,000 square feet of non-residential development. The site again is at 1439 Victory Boulevard with frontage on Guess Road, south of Prison Camp Road and north of Horton. It is in the suburban tier, it is in the Eno B Watershed Protection Overlay District and just as a note, this site is larger than the plan amendment site because the plan amendment just proposes to change the northern portion of the site, the recreation and open space designation will remain the same. The request does satisfy the minimum standards of the commercial neighborhood district as shown here. The existing site is part of a larger development plan, PO 320, PO 327, you'll see here that it's proposed for, well, the pattern shows residential development, it is proposed for residential use. And on this particular map, north is towards the top of the screen and so the site here is just a portion of that existing zoning district. Removing this parcel does not change, impact any of the commitments of the existing plan. And the proposal shown here with north to the left of the screen is the site, there's a number of commitments on this site, it does show a building area here which is a little bit more specific than we typically would see with parking along the frontage of Guess Road and Victory Boulevard. What this request proposes to do, the existing plan had two access points that would cross the stream, this plan shows one access point here. There are a number of things that have changed as well, the proposal is also increasing the intensity of the site by 3,000 square feet and there's some modifications of the use outlined in your staff report, but essentially it will be commercial and/or office with some limitations to that. The, again, 8,000 square feet of commercial building area, one-site access, the impervious surface maximum is less than 20 percent, this is in a watershed protection overlay which would allow 70 percent for reference, tree preservation is 13.07 percent. The graphic commitments are access points, the tree preservation areas, trail easement which is off-site and which is on the existing development plan for the parcel. And there's a committed uses for office and/or retail and/or restaurant without a drive-up window. And the eastern project boundary which is where the existing access points would be, they're proposing to do an on- and off-site project boundary buffer there. So, number of text commitments, again, location of the building with specification of parking areas, intensity of the site and prohibited uses are daycare bars, nightclubs, gas, gasoline pumps or restaurants with drive-through windows and the stream buffers are committed to be undisturbed. Dumpsters facing commitment, loading docks not permitted, air ventilation restrictions and a finished floor elevation restriction. There's design commitments associated with this request, I won't read it all, but they do address the architectural style, roof lines, building materials and any architectural features of any proposed building. The request again is not consistent with the future land use map, you heard that report, it is requested to match the present and proposed zoning designation of the site of commercial. And it does satisfy the policies or meet the policies that, of the comprehensive plan that apply to the site and staff determines that should the plan amendment be approved, this request would be consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. And that concludes my report.
Alright, thank you. We have two people signed up to speak, Ron Horvath and Janice Mitchell. Each one of you will have five minutes each.
Chairman Jones, Members of the Commission, Ron Horvath, Horvath Associates, and I'll stand back from this a little bit, sorry. I'll be very brief tonight, the request is really, the main focus is the deletion of two driveways across the stream and enter the residential street to the east. That was the original concept the developer had at the time. Unfortunately during the 2005, 6, 7 and later recession, the developer lost the property. Lenar Homes took over the, bought the townhome portion from the bank and another developer picked up the commercial portion. And it was pretty much agreed upon that running commercial traffic through the residential development was not highly desirable, so we, he opted to allow me to bring the rezoning forward to have a single driveway access on to Victory and leave the complete hundred-foot buffer behind the stream to buffer the neighborhood from the uses. That is the main reason tonight, we did add daycare to a list of exclusions over the other exclusions that we had in 2003. One of the reasons where the land use amendment is before you is in 2003 with zoning change, we didn't require, or the city didn't require land use plan amendments to be upgraded. So, the zoning was changed, the neighborhood commercial, and now when I come back again, we had to now go through the land amendment change just to keep everything concurrent. That occurred, I believe, 2005, four or five when that policy changed. Be glad to answer any questions you might have and I appreciate your endorsement of this project, thank you.
Hello, my name is Janice Mitchell and I am a resident at Murfield Village. My home is directly next to where this property, commercial property is. When, when our former developer foreclosed on the property, all of the homeowners we met and we learned that this property was going to come out onto Nicholas Drive. Nicholas Drive is a part of our community and we really didn't want that, so we were actually pleased with Mr. Horvath also did not want it coming into the residence. Because we have so many houses now, it's going to be 96 houses, that's a main street, so in order for all that traffic to come down that street and a commercial property to come out onto that street, it would be too much congestion right there near the corner. So, I'm in favor of this zoning proposal. And also, Mr. Horvath has told me that nothing has changed in the plan since he proposed this plan. So, we met with him on several occasions to make sure that the plan fit with what our residence wanted to be like. Also, I was happy to learn that the stream, there's a stream that comes through that property and I just heard the young lady said that that stream is not going to be disturbed because my house is in the flood plain. And so, if that stream is disturbed, it's gonna, it could possibly impact all the houses on that side. So, I'm in favor of it as long as, like I said, that stream, she said it wasn't gonna be the street, hopefully you can make that zoning decision to make that come out onto Victory Boulevard and then our community was really pleased with the plan.
Okay, thank you. We don't have anyone sign up to speak in opposition of us, so I'll close the public hearing and bring it back before the Commissioners. Do we have anyone signed up to speak? Mr. Smusky?
This question is for planning. In, in other cases, we've had locations that have had two points of ingress and egress. What's, what's the decision with this one having only a single?
Bill Judge with Transportation, believe that goes back to the original development plan that just had the single point of access for the public, public street so far as overall to Guess Road. Their ordinance allows up to a maximum of 90 units of residential development on a single point of access to Guess Road. So, so they, the townhome portions limited to that, but so far as the retail portion, changing the two access points across the creek to a single, it's been reviewed by NCDOT and the city and determined to be adequate for that size retail.
Okay, the, the reason I ask is that in the original plan, it did have other access that would, that would have come off Nicholas Drive, so would have had the two points.
The retail component would have had two access points across the creek, the Nicholas Drive, under the proposed plan, it'll be a single to, I'm drawing a blank on the name of that road that connects to Guess, but Victory, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Horvath, do you want to?
David, I might be able to help a little bit, the reason there were two points of access, it was going to be a circular drive that served the community as well. One of the intent, intended development possibilities back there was a retirement community and they wanted to be able to have golf carts and stuff come through and travel and ease of access for the residents. With the collapse or of that developer and this turning into a full townhome project with a separate commercial, that was no longer needed, but that's why we had two points of access. I'd love to have a second point on Guess Road, but neither NCDOT or the city will allow that to happen. So, one is adequate for this development.
Okay, I, I'll just express the general concern about safety on the single point.
If no one else signed up or wants to speak, we can have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of plan amendment A 1200015.
Alright, it's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand.
Motion has passed eleven to zero.
And Mr. Chair, I move approval of zoning map change A 13000.
Six, sixteen.
Okay.
Two, twenty-six.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand.
The motion is carried, eleven to zero.
Alright, thank you. Alright, we'll move down to item five B, page part two, plan amendment case A 130006 and zoning case Z 1300017.
Good evening again, Laura Woods with the Durham City County Planning Department, case A 1300006, page part two. This is in East Durham, it is in the suburban tier, it's approximately 10 acres and the applicant, Lenar Carolinas, proposes to change the future land use from office to medium-density residential. The property to the north is low-medium density residential and vacant, to the west vacant, to the south and east also vacant. According to the applicant, the proposed designation would address an increasing demand for medium and high-density residential land in Durham County. The applicant also states that medium-density residential would represent a reasonable transition between the low-medium density residential to the north of the site and office uses further south from the site. Again, here are the four criterias, criteria that plan, planning staff use to evaluate the proposal, is the proposed unit, is the proposed proposal consistent with adopted plans and policies? Is the proposed land use compatible with land use patterns existing in future? Does the proposed land use create substantial adverse impact? And is the site of adequate shape and size? In each case, staff has answered that the proposed land use is consistent, the land use is compatible. The proposed land use does not create substantial adverse impact and the site is of adequate shape and size to accommodate the proposed land use. Therefore, staff's proposal, staff's recommendation is approval, that completes my staff report.
Good evening, Amy Wolf again with the Planning Department and the companion zoning map change request, Z 1300017 is for page part two. The request is steward engineering, it's in the city's jurisdiction and the request is, is larger than the plan amendment area, includes property to the west of the plan amendment area of residential suburban multifamily with a development plan and office institutional with a development plan to have it entirely zone residential suburban multifamily with a development plan. The site area is 16.875 acres and it's for 124 residential units. It's located at 5310 and 5330 Jessup Street with frontage also on Crown Parkway which is just north and west of Page Road. There's nine acres in the office institutional and about 7.7 in the residential suburban multifamily currently. The existing zoning of the site, PO 320 is the case number, committed a mix of uses with a general location and this OI portion was shown as office development which is one of the reasons you're seeing this request for residential. The request does meet the minimum criteria for the residential suburban multifamily district. Here's the existing conditions on the site, it's been previously graded, you should see that in the aerial, that's in your staff report. It does have a natural heritage inventory on the western portion of the site, Stirrup, Iron Creek, Marsh and Slows, however, the, the site has already been graded, I just want to point that out and no further disturbances proposed, there's also a power line through the site. The proposal is shown here, it has a required building envelope and parking envelope, you'll see the access points on the Crown Parkway and a cul-de-sac. You'll see the access points on the Crown Parkway and a cul-de-sac and access at the end of Jessup Street. There's an undetermined number of site access through driveways along Jessup Street, the tree preservation area, and this committed natural buffer along the western portion, western boundary of the site, which is currently, um, there's currently trees existing there. Commitments include the number of residential units, a hundred and twenty-four, the site access points I pointed out, as well as the driveways along Jessup Street, maximum impervious surface of seventy percent, tree coverage at twenty-three percent, which also includes preservation and replacement areas. And there's a number of graphic commitments, access trees, uh, the internal vehicular private access will connect, um, the access from Crown Parkway and, uh, the cul-de-sac on Jessup Street, uh, including the construction of that cul-de-sac and then the buffer along the west, western portion of the site. There's a number of, uh, traffic improvements that may be required of this development, I won't read through them, um, they are in the staff report, um, and this will be determined at site plan. There are design commitments associated with the site, therefore allowing the site to be developed as a multifamily, um, not committing to multifamily, um, but, uh, the design commitments are required should that option be, uh, utilized, address architectural styles, roofline materials and architectural features. Again, the request is not consistent with the future land use map, therefore, um, consideration of the plan amendment before you, um, prior to, uh, action on this zoning map change. The remainder of the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we determine, staff determines, should the plan amendment be approved, this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. And that is the end of this report.
All right, thank you. We have one person signed up to speak, and it's, uh, Mr. Robert, was it Shank?
Shank, yep.
Yes? You have ten minutes.
Thank you. Uh, good evening Chairman Jones and fellow commissioners, uh, my name is Robert Shank, I am with Stewart. I live at twenty-six twenty-seven University Drive here in Durham. Uh, I appreciate the staff's, uh, staff report, and, uh, I agree with their, uh, comprehensive staff report completely. I would just like to highlight a couple of points and then make myself available for questions. Um, as, as Amy indicated, the previous zoning for Page Park included fifty-eight townhomes, uh, apartments, office and retail. Uh, what we're proposing to do is, again, just rezone a portion of the existing townhomes and in the office area to all townhomes. Um, you know, due to market demands, additional townhomes in this, in this area are necessary, and Lenar Homes would like to, uh, expand the smaller townhome section to provide a little bit larger of a community. The result of this change is, uh, is equivalent to providing eight, eight hundred and twenty-eight less trips, uh, per day, and I'm available for any questions, thank you.
All right, we don't have anyone else signed up to speak, and I'll close the public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners. Do we have anyone up here that wants to comment? Commissioner Smusky?
Mr. Shank, uh, do any of these new townhomes in increased density, do they lend themselves to affordable housing?
Uh, no sir, they'll all be market rate.
Okay, and, um, a question for Ms. Wolf. Ms. Wolf, can you remind me why, uh, this sec, uh, segment was left office institutional? Was there a transitionary or, when, you know, we've, we've reviewed this whole section before, why was that left office?
The two thousand and three plan, the existing zoning?
Okay.
There was a, on that existing zoning, this particular, the office institutional is part of the larger site, um, to the west and the south, and this particular portion is, was designated for office building, and a commitment listed on that plan is for the general location of mix of uses and the location of those uses.
Okay. All right, thanks. And on, on the diagram, uh, there's two, there's an entrance on Crown Parkway, is that a road or?
Crown Parkway?
Uh, yes.
Crown Parkway is currently developed, it is a, a road.
Um, there, there are two arrows, and then there's a line. Does that indicate a proposed road through the development?
It, it's a, it is not a public right-of-way, it is an access easement for the terminology of the city of Durham. So, it's not a private street, uh, not a public road, but it'll act, I mean, to you and me and everybody else, it's gonna act like a street, and it'll be privately maintained.
And there're gonna be townhomes on either side of it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And it's gonna connect up with Jessup?
That's correct. Essentially, Jessup goes down, uh, Jessup is a currently public right-of-way, uh, per reference guide for development from Public Works, a public street has to end in a cul-de-sac, so we're simply, you know, extending what to the layperson will be a street and looping back around the Crown Parkway.
But you could get fire and emergency vehicles in on that route?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all, thank you.
All right. Any other comments? If not, we'll, uh, have a motion.
Chairman Jones, I'll move approval of zoning, uh, A-1300006.
It's been moved and properly second, all those in favor, let it be, let it be known by saying, oh, raising your right hand, wrong meeting, sorry. All right.
The motion has passed eleven to zero.
All right.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move zoning case one three zero 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 one seven.
All right, thank you. It's been moved and properly second, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand.
Motion has passed eleven to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll move down to Item 6A, which is a public hearing zoning map change request for Hope Valley Farms Pod BB Revision Case Z-1300012.
Good evening, Amy Wolf with the Planning Department for our final zoning map change case. This case, again, is a change in the existing development plan that is, uh, attached to the site. Case Z-one-two, uh, excuse me, Z-1300012 for Hope Valley Farms Pod BB Revisions. The applicant is Greenberg Pharoah, it's in the city's jurisdiction. Uh, request is from Commercial General with a development plan to Commercial General with a development plan for six point seven seven acres of non-residential development. The site is located in the suburban tier, it's not in a watershed protection overlay, it's at ten fifty-one Martin Luther King Junior Parkway between South Roxborough Street and Archdale Drive. Uh, the present designation was zoned, uh, by case Z-0900007, and there's a proposed change in that, that development plan by removing a commitment, I will go over those in more detail, or, um, but essentially to, um, remove a commitment to prohibit fuel sales. The request does meet the minimum standards of the Commercial General District. The existing conditions on the site, you'll see here, it is already zoned Commercial General with a development plan, there's floodway, floodway fringe, stream, wetlands, and a power line easement running through the site, and they are all demonstrated here. The proposed conditions of the site show protection of those areas, uh, you'll see the building and parking envelope in the dark dashed line. And I'll go over the change in commitments of the existing designation. Uh, this partic, this, uh, request is for between one thousand and twenty thousand square feet of building footprint, has the two site access points onto Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, impervious surface maximum of seventy percent with tree coverage at ten percent. These are all on the existing plan. Uh, commitments are access point location, tree preservation areas, um, the opacity, there's a, committed for a, um, more dense buffer than would otherwise be required, typically it would be a point six opacity buffer required, twenty-four inch heads, um, hedge along Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, and, um, some grading to accommodate streetlights. Also, there are some graphic commitments with details at Site Drive One and Site Drive Two, these are on the existing plan. And there's a number of tax commitments, and these also do, are pulled from the existing plan about, um, the opacity, uh, a transit facility along Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, there's, uh, some stormwater mitigation, uh, look up specifics about restaurant with drive-through and, um, uh, screening with a masonry wall and, uh, location of speaker boxes if there's a drive-through. There's also a number of improvements on, um, at, at the following locations, at Martin Luther King Junior Parkway and, and both site driveways. Commitments that were removed from the existing plan are, um, conditions that have already been satisfied by recent development in the area. There are design commitments that address rooflines and building materials for any buildings, and the request is consistent with the future land use map and the applicable policies of the comprehensive plan, and staff determines that this request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have two people signed up to speak, Louis Cheek and Patrick Biker, we have five minutes each.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Louis Cheek, I along with Patrick Biker, represent Murphy Oil Corporation. We seek a rezoning of the six point seven seven acres essentially across from the new Walmart on Martin Luther King Junior Parkway. While the property is already zoned commercial, we seek a change in the development plan. We wish to remove the committed element that there will be no fuel sales or convenience stores on the site. Murphy Oil proposes to put a convenience store and four islands with eight product dispensers on the property. Murphy Oil is an international company based in Eldorado, Arkansas. It is fully integrated, engaging in fuel exploration and drilling. It's on the New York Stock Exchange. It has eleven hundred seventy-four convenience store sites across the United States, seventy-three sites with over five hundred employees are in North Carolina. This would be the first site in Durham, there would be seven to eight employees at the site. We estimate that the site would create two million dollars in tax base, and of course there would be associated sales tax generation. There will be a number of enhancements and improvements to make this development neighborhood friendly, which Mr. Biker will speak to you about. Traffic improvements will be constructed to mitigate the effects of a modest increase in traffic. There will be no further median cuts in Martin Luther King Junior Parkway as a result of the project. Staff has studied the project, and have you have already heard, has determined that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and applicable policies and ordinances, and we ask that you recommend approval of this zoning map change to the City Council. Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Jones, members of the Planning Commission, my name is Patrick Biker, I live at two six one four Stewart Drive. I'm an attorney, I'm an attorney with Morningstar Law Group here in Durham. I'm here tonight representing Murphy USA for this zoning map change, uh, for six point seven seven acres along the south side of Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, directly across from an existing Walmart. I'd like to briefly introduce the rest of our team that's here tonight. In the front row, we have Mr. Wayne Gibson with Murphy USA, and then we have our project engineers, Hamilton Williams and Greg Sistrunk with Greenberg Pharoah, and then last but not least, is our traffic engineer, Earl Llewellyn with Kimley Horn. In addition to the reasons given by my friend and co-counsel Louis Cheek, I think there are a couple of important points that show we have accounted for potential neighborhood impacts with the development plan that's before you tonight. First, we will construct a point eight opacity buffer entirely within our property. To provide more detail on that committed element, a point eight opacity buffer means that for every one hundred feet along our side and rear property lines, we will install about eight to ten canopy or ever, evergreen trees, eleven to seventeen understory trees, and about seventy-five shrubs. To me, that's a lot of planting along a hundred feet. We're talking on average about one shrub every sixteen inches. As a result, there'd be plenty of screening along the property line back towards Hope Valley Farms. Second, based on Durham GIS, it appears that the closest residence to our project is approximately five hundred feet away. That's more than one and a half football fields, and, um, that's in addition to the point eight opacity buffer I just described. I happen to look at, uh, my personal residence and figure out how far away I live from Nana's Restaurant, and I'm actually closer to Nana's Restaurant than the townhouses in Hope Valley Farms would be to Murphy Oil's, uh, proposed convenience store. In addition, we have a committed element to ensure that the drive-through facilities, uh, have their speakers oriented away from the residential area that's to the southeast of our development. One last point, the parcel that's before you tonight has been zoned commercial for the past four years. We now have a project that can implement this established zoning designation. We were pleased to host a neighborhood meeting about this project since there was a TIA required with the zoning map change. So, we sent out forty-five personalized letters to nearby property owners. Only two of those forty-five people invited came to the meeting, and we had a thorough discussion with them about the landscape buffer I just described in my comments. We do not perceive either of those two neighbors to be opposed to the convenience store we hope to build at this location. And so, for all those reasons, we respectfully ask for your approval, be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I'll close the public hearing and bring it back before the commissioners. Do we have anyone wishing to speak? Mr. Smusky?
Mr. Biker?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Um, maybe, maybe I'm just not reading it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, the, the topo here, uh, and, and the, the site has a steep slope that goes down below the grade of the roadway. Is that, is that going to be brought up to the roadway grade?
Yes.
Okay, so it's all gonna be graded?
Fairly level, correct.
Okay, and then it's going to be out of the hundred-year floodplain?
Absolutely, yes, we'll not be requesting, uh, I've had to request major special use permits for floodplain, we're not going there.
Okay, and?
Commissioner Whitley knows that very well. Sir McDonald's at Wellens Village was, uh, had, need to have that type of permit, we're not pursuing that, sir.
Okay, and, and then there's going to be protections for the, um, for the lower level that's left, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's all I had, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No one else wishing to speak, can we get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Make the motion and approve the?
Turn your mic on.
There you go. Make the motion that we approve the zoning change of Z-1300012.
It's been moved and properly second, all those in favor, let it be known by raising your right hand. Any opposition?
Motion has passed eleven to zero.
All right, thank you. Move down to Item 7B, and, uh, we'll have, uh, Patrick Young administer the election of officers.
Thank you Commissioners again, Pat Young, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quickly before I ask for nominations for Chair, I did wanna, uh, wrap up a piece of business from the last meeting. If you recall, um, there was some confusion about eligibility and length of terms. The interlocal agreement stipulates that neither the city or the county shall have more than two consecutive terms, uh, as Chair or Vice Chair. And what we as staff, uh, working in-house are recommending to you all that, um, Mr. Jones' service filling the remainder of, um, Mr. Monz's unexpired term would not count against either the city or county, and essentially we start from zero, so either, any, either jurisdiction that's represented today could get two full terms. So, that's what we recommend based on the interlocal and rules of procedure. So, unless there's any objection to that, we'll assume that all members are eligible, and whoever is elected, whether it's city or county representatives, could have two full terms. So, I'd be happy to entertain any, uh, nominations for Chair for the coming year. Mr. Whitley?
I move that we, um, that we keep the existing Chair.
Just nominate him.
Okay, uh, no second necessary for nominations, so I have, um, Antonio Jones. Any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I'd ask for, uh, a vote on, uh, another term for Mr. Jones as Chair. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Ayes have at eleven to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Jones.
All right.
I'll turn it back over to you for, uh, nominations and election of Vice Chair.
Okay. Can we get any nominations for Vice Chair?
Nominate Vice Chair David Harris.
Second. No need for se, do we have any other nominations for Vice Chair? All those in favor, Vice Chair Harris. Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Ayes have it. Congratulate Vice Chair. All right. So we'll move down to item seven C, which is any announcements? And what do we have for next month?
Mr. Jones, we have, uh, four land use cases scheduled for next month.
Okay. The, the question is, the election for the month of November is?
It's the fourth of?
It's the first Tuesday.
Yes.
We did check, uh, the, at the beginning of the year, we did check to see if the November Planning Commission would fall on the November Election Day, and it did not. We didn't take into account, obviously, the City Council primary, but the regular Election Day would, uh, will not conflict with your next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. And Mr. Gibbs, you had a question or announcement?
Now, I'm on. Are, are we still broadcasting, by the way? Okay, good.
Yeah, yes.
That, that's good.
Oh, okay.
I, I wanted to bring to everybody's attention, uh, the board, the commission, and, well, the staff already knows about this, and any of those who can't find anything else better to watch, uh, than a commission meeting. But it has to do with, uh, and I'm sure you've all heard of the GSS, the grade separation studies that are ongoing, and there are several places where you can, uh, view these hard copy plans, and I would, and one is in the Transportation Department in, in this building. But it, it's, uh, some proposals by the NC DOT and, uh, along with, uh, the Durham Traffic and Transportation Department. I would encourage everybody, uh, to learn as much as they can and to, uh, just be aware of, once you see the plans and read about it, you will, you will become aware of the potential tremendous impact this is going, could make, uh, from one end of town to the other. It doesn't mean that this is something that is going to happen, but they're asking for community input, and this is probably the backbone of, of our long-range planning, uh, is to get input from the public. There will be, uh, a public comment section, session at the City Council meeting October twenty-first, so that'll give you a deadline to work toward, and I would strongly encourage everyone to, uh, avail yourself of any opportunity to find out information. But that's. The information, uh, give me about the GSS. The newspaper, the Durham newspaper has, uh, has published several things, uh, several articles, and if I may, I, I think you're going to help me out here, right?
We'll be happy to send you all a link to it, because it i, it is online through the Transportation Department, as Mr. Gibbs alluded to.
Right, and, and that link, as good as it is, I went up to the, uh, Transportation Department here at the Durham, uh, tran, uh, Traffic and Transportation Department. You can't beat looking at those hard copies and being able to flip back and forth, uh, but still, that information that's online, and, and I do appreciate you sending that link to everybody. It's something that we really need to consider for the future, because, as I said, it could have some major impacts on, on the town. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Any other announcements? Oh, one more. Is it possible for us to get an updated roster with all of the appropriate information on it? Okay, good. Thank you. No other announcements? No. Our hearts and minds are clear. We go ahead and adjourn. Thank you.